Thank you, Zach. We're live. Thanks for joining us on this Monday, February 1st, 2020, for our public work session here at Fort Valley Utilities Commission. This is a teleconference. It will be live on Zoom and Facebook. And I'd like to thank everybody for coming. Mayor, being in attendance, Commissioner Thompson, and all the A-Team. Thank you, guys, for bringing us here. Commissioner Thompson, would you give us a word of prayer, please?
Okay, yes. Let's bow our heads. Dear God, we come to you to thank you for our community, our nation, our world, our people. Everybody, Father, we just, we thank you. We thank you for being so good to us. Father, we just ask that you just help us, our leaders, teach us the way of the Lord, help our officials, keep our city near, neat and clean. Father, bless the sick, the shut-in, the bereaved families everywhere, especially during this pandemic, Father. Make sure that we're all wearing masks and doing the right thing. And, Lord, in your word, you said that if we seek, we shall find. If we knock, the door shall open. And, Father, we're seeking, we're knocking, and we're asking you in this troublesome time to please be with us, stay with us, Father, and we'll be sure to give you all the praise and glory. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Thank you, everybody, for coming. And a word on this COVID we're dealing with, these new strains that are showing up, everybody. Please wear your mask. Please social distance. Please be careful. I'm a big fan of if they don't live with you, they don't need to be in your house, in your car. Stay safe. Check on, check on everybody. Check on your friends, your neighbors, your family. Check on everybody. All right? Going to bring this meeting to order, y'all, and thank you for coming. Thank you for tuning in. And we have our first on our, on our agenda is a financial update, the staff updates.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'll take that. First, I want to apologize. I was getting the cart before the horse when I was working on this. I put out financial update and operations update, not thinking this was February the 1st, so I didn't have any of the activity report. So I'm going to have to take a pass on the operations update. Maybe we'll do that Monday night at the public meeting, and I'll have all the notes available then. But I do have the revenue and expense report for the first three months of the fiscal year. I think you all have that report. I wanted to just focus on a couple of columns on it. You'll look on the, you'll notice on the right-hand side of your revenue and expense report, you have a couple of columns, second and third from the right, budget and total. I just want to talk about those items on those columns just for a bit. The first section is operating revenues. This is what we get charred. These are the charges we receive for all of the utilities. Under the bolded line, the third line of that section, under budget, you'll see $5,663,700. That is what we had budgeted for expected income and bill that much for the first three months. What came in for the first three months was actually $5,764,000, which is $100,687 more dollars than had been budgeted for the first three months. The second section deals with cost of goods sold. That's how much it cost us to buy the utilities, gas and electric that we resell to our customers, plus the cost to operate the water and wastewater plants. Those are tools that we have to have to distribute the utilities that we buy. The total cost of goods sold, it's that third line, the bolded line, we had budgeted $3,565,000 for the total cost of the goods sold. Actually, they came in at $3,617,000. So for the first three months, the total cost of goods sold, the extreme right-hand column, you'll see was $52,899. The next big section, well, I'm sorry, the next line is gross margin. So we take the cost, total cost of the goods sold, subtract that from the total operating revenues, and that gives us the gross margin of the utilities. So you'll see we had budgeted $2,098,000 for the gross margin. It actually came in at $2,146,000, which is good. The next big section is the one that pertains to expenses, and that's where all the expenses we encounter in providing the utilities are shown here. I want to go down to the bottom line, and then I'll go back up to the top and talk for a second. But you'll see under total expenses, that bolded line, under budget, you'll see the total expenses budgeted for the first three months were $2,654,000. The total expenses actually came in at $2,180,000. That's a substantial amount less than had been budgeted in total expenses. Now, having said that, if you'll go up to the top of this section, first line is personal services. You'll see where we had budgeted $622,000 for personally services. It actually came in at $482,000. That is a dramatic drop in what the expected personal services were expected. There's a reason for that. It's not a good reason, but it's a reason nevertheless. Those personal services relate to the number of employees you have. For instance, we're three positions down in the electric department right now, and the water and wastewater, I've got a couple of vacancies. So anytime you have a vacancy, that salary, insurance, and all related expenses of an employee that you're not having to pay, and that was the reason for this hundred, almost $140,000 less in personal services. The next line is purchased services. We had anticipated $386,000 for purchased services, and they came in at $196,000. Those purchased services include engineering fees, repair and maintenance, professional fees, and things of that nature. Generally, those are budgeted a little bit higher than what we would expect because you never know. You never know when an engineering expense may come in that you had not anticipated or repaired maintenance, of course. Sometimes they don't come in like you'd think it would. So as you can see, we had budgeted $386,000. It came in $196,000. That's not to say this time next month that that will not have equaled out. So if you go down to the third line from the bottom, operating income, you will see, under budget, we had anticipated having a loss of $555,777 at this juncture of our budget year. In fact, if you look right to the left of that, we came in at $34,059 less. So that is over a half a million dollar swing there in operating income, which is a good thing. That's a $521,000, $521,718 swing from our operating income. And now, this generally, we're in the, getting into dead of winter now. Utilities will increase during the cold winter months for gas and electricity, and it'll calm down a little bit in the shoulder months of April, March and April, sometimes May. And then, of course, when hot summer gets here, then the sale of utilities will increase dramatically. So those numbers will, will kind of even out as we go down the budget. That's all I have on the financial update. Things are looking good. That's the best I can say, I guess, for right now.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
Man, if I'm in order, I just can't help but say this. Somebody has been tightening their belts, and I thank them for, for doing that because what I'm hearing is, I can't say we overbudgeted because you don't ever know whether that's going to happen or not. But what I'm seeing is people have been abiding by what we budgeted and tried to work within that budget and do a little bit less. Now, coming out there on social media, and I got to say this, they are talking about, when you say we have some employees that have resigned, they blaming us for that because of what has happened with the replacement of commissioners with what we had done according to the charter. And of course, I never take care of any business on social media until they start telling them lies. And most of the ones that were telling those lies don't even live here anymore. And so I just have to, I have to praise our, our workers for tightening the belt. That's what they usually accuse us of. When I say us, I'm talking about the city, spending too much money. And, and so I, I want to, I want to pat Ned and whoever else he wants to pat on the shoulder for tightening that belt and making sure that we have been living within our means. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor. Those are kind words. And I will say, it's not me. I mean, it's the whole force. Kathy Johnson doing a tremendous job over in finances. She, she's as good as I've seen any accountant. So she keeps a really close watch on this and alerts me as often as she can about how we're doing, and I pass that along. At one point, you said I would like to respond to about the loss of employees. Since I've been here, I started on one day, and two days later, we lost two or three linemen. We're losing employees not because, since I've been here, that I've noticed, not through dissatisfaction, but better, better employment elsewhere as far as money goes.
Yeah.
And it's very difficult to keep people, and you're competing with other utility providers, and you're competing with contractors who really provide the same services you do. So it's, it's always a difficult situation trying to keep employees. But we're doing the best we can, and I thank you for your words, Mayor.
I appreciate that, and that happens on both sides of the spectrum. We lose employees, too, who go and drive for private, driving for, for truck, truck driving because it pays better. Well, you know, that kind of thing. So we run into all of that. But I, I just ask our citizens to, to check, check for reliable sources before they start pointing fingers on different stuff and spread stuff. That's what's happening in the Capitol right now, and it's about to put this nation in the, in the, in a bad fix. So let's don't put our city in a bad fix by doing that. Thank you.
Thank y'all for your, for your, for your comments. The A-Team, all the employees over the commission for doing the necessary, taking the scrap, putting the scrap into place, making it happen on that end, and, and, you know, everything and everybody. We thank you, and, and everybody has to understand that when we, as employees of a business and employees as elected of the citizens, we have to do all we can to make sure everything, the line items match.
Yeah.
We have to make sure those things best we can, make sure they're matched, and try to stay within the budget that we set to try to operate. And I thank everybody for that. Any other comments for Mr. Watson on the financial update?
Yes, I have one, two, three. Mr. Watson, do you see where in, under our personnel, can we tighten that a little bit more? Is there any way that we can? Because I, I've, I've noticed that there were two employees that were, that don't work on, on Fridays. And I feel that if they don't work on Fridays, why do we have that many in customer service? So I, I guess what I need to do is talk with you further about that. In the next question, I don't know if you want to answer them as I go, or you want me to just give it to you all in one?
You can go ahead.
Okay. I, I, I noticed that we have the generational account. Do you know how much money we have in the new generation count? And also, when will my, when will the papers be ready for, for me to sign for the BBNT account?
Okay, the generational account you're speaking of is the restricted account in municipal competitive trust. We have $1.9 million in that account. And it is restricted toward the purchase or buying our shares of Plant Vogel generating units three and four.
Okay.
And the BBNT offices are closed right now, except for the drive-through. We had somewhat of a snafu with your BBNT cards. I don't know. I'll take the blame for that. I may have misplaced them. But we found out, we thought we had them signed, and you had signed them or can't find them. So we are getting units now, and I think our administrative person went to the BBNT bank today, if I'm not mistaken, trying to get those cards. And we'll get them to you. We got them today. We'll get them to you tomorrow anyway.
Okay.
And as far as people not working on Friday, we, we do have employees still working because of COVID at home portions of the day. And some people are, are not. Some, you know, we work an extra hour on pay by five days. You know, people's shift sometimes shift back and forth based on that to keep everybody at eight hours. But I, I don't know. I, I can't answer the two people being off on Fridays. I'm not aware of that.
Okay, we'll, we'll get together with that. When I was over there, that's what I saw. Okay, thank you. I'll, I'll let you know the ins and outs of that later, okay?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Watson? All right, thank you. Moving on with the agenda items for this February 1st, the USDA Project A, Emergency Generator.
We've, we've talked about this project day in and day out. This is not a big deal. The project's underway, and if you, if you've been down the Our Higgs Boulevard there to the, where it dead ends in 49, you'll see that project's ongoing now. They're clearing dirt and getting underground pipes in and that kind of stuff. Now, this project is, has three parts, contract A, B, and C. Project A relates to the building, and let's see here. A is, is the well and chemical feed building. That's the 2.6 million for Project A. Part of that project is having an emergency generator that we necessarily must have for the big essential parts of our facilities, like the wastewater treatment plants, all the water plants and wells and things like that in case of a power failure. Those generators come on automatically and continue providing water for our customers. This USDA Project A has an emergency generator, which is diesel-powered. We've given a lot of thought to that. I, I don't know how that came about. But there's also a diesel gen, I meant a generator, emergency generator that is natural gas-powered. And I'm inclining to, to ask the commissioners to consider changing from the diesel generator to the natural gas. There's quite a few pros and a couple of cons related to that. But if you have a diesel generator, you're going to have to have a couple of big tanks, maybe 250-gallon tanks or more, at least two of them. And when you have diesel fuel or gasoline, things like that, that could contaminate the soil, you must have a containment system built around them to hold 110% of the capacity of the tanks. Diesel fuel, also, if it's left not recycled often, you'll get algae growth and moisture in the fuel. That'll have a buildup in the tanks as well as the generator when it's running. We already have natural gas at that site, so it's not a big problem to convert that generator to natural gas.
Question, question. Isn't it, isn't it true now that diesel fuel has gone outrageously high now as opposed to natural, natural gas?
It is definitely rising, and it rises as crude oil rises. And that's, that's another one of the issues that I was going to talk about. We don't have any idea nor control over the price of diesel fuel in five years from now, 10 years from now. It might be outrageously high. Natural gas may also be high, but we do know that we'll get all the natural gas we need at wholesale rates. So I'm thinking the fuel will be much less with gas than diesel. If we convert to a natural gas, this emergency generator, we can then connect a generator we have already in Gano, a smaller generator. We can connect the lift station that's at Gano to this new natural gas generator, which then frees up another, allows us to use another emergency generator at one of the other lift stations that we have. And we have several lift stations throughout the system that do not have an emergency generator. So that would allow us to use a generator that's in use now at Gano, another one of our lift stations.
So, Mr. Watson, what you're saying is you want to do a natural gas as opposed to diesel, and that larger natural gas generator will be a dual-purpose in Gano, and we'll remove the older one for another location?
That's correct. You said that so much better than I did.
And the, the other, the other question, I think, will there, is there some, will we have to tank that fuel would be a direct line, direct feed to that, to that generator, or will it be a tank also?
No, it'll be right off the main line, just like a home. It'll be at high pressure, of course. We'll have to put a regulator to reduce it. Now, the big con of this is that generator will have to be upsized rather than a diesel-driven generator. Diesel engine produces more torque and more power than a natural gas. So to change to a natural gas, the one big throwback to that is it'll have to be much larger, and it will cost $55,000 more than the diesel. So that's, that's mighty big decision to make. However, that, that Project A is almost $2.3 or $2.4 million. If we change this to a natural gas diesel, I mean, we're looking years into the future. I think it would be cost-effective to do that, even with the increased cost of it upfront. The fuel will not be an issue. We won't have to build a containment area. And as you said, we can use, that will free up another generator. I just want you to be aware of all the, the good, bad, and ugly of this. And, and maybe next Monday night, you can give it some thought. And if you want to vote on it next Monday night, we can go ahead and do, make that change order in that and change it from a diesel to a natural gas-powered emergency generator.
Mr. Ned, you, you have all the, I'm sure you have the, or can get the, the numbers associated with, just out of, you know, for, for, for our identification, what it costs for the diesel generator, the containment unit, tank, the whole setup for that, as opposed to the upsized general, gas-powered generator. And of course, the environmental aspects of it, what we look for, that, that we can't change short-term. The environmental fallout, if anything happens diesel. I understand that. That's a long, lengthy, expensive process. We dealt with that locally many years ago, with that other chemical place over there. But I, I, I just wanted to have the numbers and the comparison and the plan of what, what we should be, what we're trying to do, if that makes sense to anybody.
Mr. Chairman, I think it's more realistic to say, to have the numbers of the cost of the conversion and what the difference is right now. Because, see, ten, what, five years ago, five, 10 years ago, it was more prudent for, for, for me to buy a gas heater in my house because electricity was going up so high. And so I got a wall mount gas heater, which saved me money for a while. But then the price of gas went up afterwards. And so now, I, I don't know if we could kind of project that for a whole, all those long years to see if the price of diesel fuel is going to be u, u, up higher than natural gas is right now. But I don't know how long you can predict that. The cost of the conversion and what it would save us right now is worth it, I think, checking into that.
I'll get the numbers.
It's kind of demanding, kind of demanding to say if it's going to save us money 20 years from now. Okay.
I will, I will get in contact with the municipal gas authority. That's the company through which we deal with buying the gas off the cross-country pipeline and get there. They've got a lot of analysts. I'm sure they can come up with numbers of the projected price of gas and diesel fuel into the future.
Okay.
Right. Thank you. I, I just, I understood when I went to a few meetings and went down to Jacksonville and watched that all these services, all these fuel, electric, gas, they're, it, it fluctuates by the minute. You know, and, you know, like you said, gas was more prudent a few years ago. Now it's electric, and I'm sure it's going to change again, and probably change by the time we get off this meeting. But it, it's, you know, that's our, that's, we're here to take the best information we have on hand at this time and make a good, sound, logical decision with a long-range plan of how we're going to put this together for our city. That's what we're, we, we should be doing. Any more questions for Mr. Watson on the USDA in Emergency Generator? All right, thank you. Moving on to the next agenda item.
Before you go to the next agenda, I want to remind you, though, they are digging, I want to say this again, where they are digging and doing various things, they don't have purposes for that dirt. Save it and let it go to where the truck stop is being built because he needs, they need field dirt out there.
I checked with the high school project already for that dirt, and that that they have off to the side, they're going to use. But as this progress, I mean, as this project progresses, they may have excess, and I've already asked for it to be used. I'll, I'll keep in touch with you about it.
Thank you, sir.
All right, here we go. Making all the projects work all around the county and the city. Let's make it happen. Moving on to the next one, the sewer service for the truck stop project.
This is a project I was, I've given a lot of thought to, and I may still change my mind, but I want to get you up to speed on what we're doing now. I'm going to try something new with Zoom. I'm going to, I don't know, I don't know if that's going to work or not. It doesn't look like it will. Do each of you, you have aerial of that area, right?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, if you'll go to the, that aerial of, of, it's got truck stop written with a magic marker on the bottom right-hand corner of that particular aerial. If you all will look at that, I just have a couple of comments and, and some thoughts on that. You'll see where it says truck stop, right across the street, there's a red line on, on the east side of 49. You can see where 49 goes, cat cornered, and you see the bypass where it dead ends there right in front of, or right to the right of the Lighthouse Church. All right, if you, if you take the center line of the, of the bypass where it stops at 49, almost directly across from that, across 49, you'll see a black line that goes straight along the property line on, off to the, off the aerial. That is the projected, oh, I'm sorry, I'm telling you wrong. If you, at that intersection, if you make a left turn and go down to use the, the end of that red line, I'm sorry for the confusion. You see, you'll be a black circle there, and that line runs right along the property line of the Georgia Pecan Company. That is the proposed sewer line from the truck stop. It's directly across the street from the truck stop property. That sewer line goes right along that property line and on around the corner, behind Pecan Place, behind Heinz Automotive, behind Heritage Hills, and goes to the lift station that's located behind Heritage Hills subdivision. The project, as it's been coordinated, has a manhole about, if you see Georgia if you see, uh, Georgia Pecan, it's the building with the brown front and the white back. It's almost halfway. Right across that line from where the brown stops and the white begins, there's a proposed site of a, uh, manhole. What we would like to do is to bring that manhole back toward the bypass. I'm, I'm sorry, back toward the highway forty-nine and put it right, right outside of the right of way, rather than running on down the stream. The other thought is this, and this is what I'm having some thoughts about. I don't know. I'll get your feedback on it. But you see that red line that starts at the manhole site? It goes up to the, uh, it goes up toward, uh, the credit union along, uh, highway forty-nine. It's a red line. It's four hundred feet. We could put in an eight-inch sewer line along that red line up to that point where the red line ends. It would require an easement across the front of Georgia Pecan. Georgia Pecan Company, uh, has a septic tank and the owner has already expressed an interest in connecting to a sewer line if it was installed there. And he would grant us an easement at no cost for the line just to get that manhole back closer to the credit union. Now, I don't think I've confused you all, um, but that's it. The, uh, the existing sewer line goes along the property line all the way around to the lift station. If we put, if we move that manhole back to forty-nine and put in a new manhole at the end of the red line and an eight-inch line, then we could provide sewer to the Georgia Pecan, to Heinz Automotive and all the way back to the credit union and anybody else that wants it in the future. We, it would be, we could do that. Now the question comes this. Do we want to attach this to a truck stop project or do we want to do, do this as an aside later on? Uh, it would be easy to do it now. It's not in the, it's not in that cost that you all have for the truck stop. Uh, this adding a, a manhole and putting in that eight-inch pipe will cost about sixteen thousand dollars. We have ten thousand dollars in that project for, it's almost like a contingency, but it's for supplemental, any supplemental additions we want. So the question comes, do we want to change that or do you have the appetite to change that and install that sewer line for future growth? Or not? I'm leaning toward doing it, but it, it'll cost sixteen thousand dollars. Uh, and we can, if, you know, if it's important enough, we can take that out of reserves if necessary. Maybe we have some leftover of this project that we could, we could use for that purpose. It would just improve our opportunity for get picking up more sewer line, I meant more sewer customers from Georgia Pecan all the way toward town to say to the credit union anyway.
Ned, can I, can I, can I, uh, chime in for a minute? And of course, it, it might not be appropriate for me to jump in ahead of everybody else. But it, it sounds like it's, it's an opportune time to expand that as well as attract more development that way. Cause there's more space over that way that we'd have to provide services for. I had talked with, um, the county, um, um, chairman about that road, that dirt road that goes down there alongside that church, even though, um, part of it, that's front part of it is, is, uh, in the city, but the back part of it is in the county. Goes all the way back to Taylor's Mill Road. And the truck stop, uh, developer was trying to get DOT to do a, um, a median cutting there in order to make the, um, ingress and egress, um, better. And DOT didn't want to do that. Um, and so when we, when I talked to, I had talked to the county's engineer sometime back, he never did even go to the county commissioners about it. And so when I brought that up, I think they're going to relook at that too. All of that is more, uh, in our favor for more, uh, economic development there. I just need to say that now. Uh, also, um, BJ, before we started with the truck stop situation, was trying to get us to do some larger pipes too. Because if we were going all the way up to where the high school was, then we need to try to plan for that too. So some of the stuff that's being done right now is a, is a, is a result of looking at that and having some vision for the future. But I appreciate that, uh, what, regardless of what we decide to do on it.
Yeah. That road you're talking about, Mayor, you're talking about Bassett Road? Is that the dirt road?
Yeah.
Bassett Road, right. Bassett Road, that dirt road.
Yeah.
And so, um, when we get ready to do something with our piece wash allocation and that kind of thing, I'm sure, um, that the county will work along with us and we, because we need to do some mass resurfacing of, 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 uh, our streets in the city. So, uh, when, whenever we, we, we deal with that, I'm sure that would be considered. But I talked to the engineer about it. He never did go to the, he never did go to the county commissioner and say anything to him. If I hadn't known that, I would have known it from the start. Uh huh. Okay. Thank you.
Well, uh, I, I don't know, um, I don't know what, I don't know if we want to just go with the truck stop project as it is and then later on. And, and that truck stop project has become, uh, so riddled with misunderstandings and financing. I'm not really, I don't have a really firm gris- grasp of that now anyway. Uh, and I don't want to complicate that with putting this extension in with another, uh, manhole. But I do definitely want to move the manhole from its original place there, right, right halfway down Georgia Pecan. Move it back toward, uh, forty-nine. That will give us, uh, the leeway to go back toward town or back toward the golf course, either way. But it just, it just, it didn't make any sense to me to put it halfway down that property line when it would serve a better purpose up by the highway.
I, I do want to share with everybody for, because, uh, Clay is not in this meeting, but the contractor is set to begin, uh, construction on that project on March the fifteenth. And of course, he said if anything could come where he could get a little bit faster, he'd get it in there. But due to COVID, that set them back a little bit. So March the fifth, fifteen, which when they are getting ready to start construction on that.
On the, uh, truck stop?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Well, I think we, um, have some pretty decent numbers to think about. You said about sixteen thousand to put in in that project. We have a ten thousand dollar contingency amount in there. So, um, man, like you said, it's, uh, we got projects, uh, coming in from the county and everywhere who's trying to get that way. We may need to really put our heads together and look at, look at doing, you know, moving on that, um, you know, trying, trying, we have to be ready to, at some point, we gotta, we have to be inviting to people to come and having the basic infrastructure in place is one of the big key items.
I, I concur.
Based on what the mayor just said, about March the fifteenth, uh, we, we really do need to move on this. Um, and Monday night I'll have, I'll have more, uh, concrete numbers and a, a stronger position, I guess. But if, if all the commissioners are, uh, at least, uh, in concept and agreement with it, I'll go forward with presenting better numbers on it.
Okay, commissioners, um, with this, um, USDA generator project and the sewer service, we are in a consensus to moving forward to our regular meeting on next Monday?
Yes.
For, for a vote? All right. Thank you, those two. And anything else? Yes, ma'am.
Now, I voted.
Oh, no, we, we.
Voting.
Yeah. We, we moving forward to the, to our, our, our regular call meeting on, on, uh, on the, on the eighth. Uh, thank you. Anything else, Mr. Watson?
No, sir. That's all I have today.
Okay. Um, I thank you. We're going to go into executive session now. I need a motion for someone, uh, motion. Take us into executive session for this call meeting, this, um, work session.
I offer a motion that we, uh, go into an executive session at this time.
But I can't vote. I'm seconding it.
All right. Second, uh, motion, the second, go into executive session. Show our hands with a vote to take it in there. Take it to executive session. Thank you so much, Ms. Rose, Mayor. All right. We're going to leave and go to our executive session link.
A bit slower that time.
All right. All right. Um, thank you, commissioners for coming back. I'll need to entertain a motion to bring us back to public session.
That's a move.
Move. All right. Vote to take us back into public session. All right. Thank you so much. We're back in public, uh, public work session for this February first, fourth, uh, uh, two thousand twenty-one. I'd like to thank everybody for attending. Any executive session, there was no votes taken. It was, uh, litigation and personnel. And, um, I thank everybody for attending. Commissioner Thompson, thank you so much. Um, Mayor Williams, Attorney Patrick, the A team, it's Penny and Mr. Zach. I thank everybody, Mr. Mr. Neil Watson. I thank y'all. And, um, our next meeting will be, um, February eighth, six o'clock PM, um, our regular public call meeting. We'll see you guys there. And I'm going to bring this meeting to an end on this February first, two thousand twenty-one. Happy Valentine's Day.
See you later.
Goodbye.